All right, I'll call the meeting to order. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Before I make a mo- or have someone make a motion to approve the agenda, I do want to add one thing. I want to add a discussion about school boulevard roundabouts. So, if someone wants to approve the agenda with that addition.
If we approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Kip.
Second.
Second by Tracy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? All right, next we're going to move on to approval of the meeting minutes. Special meeting minutes from March 31st, special meeting minutes from May 27th, and regular meeting minutes from May 27th.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
All right, motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Lee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Minutes are passed, next we're going to move on to citizens' comments. If there's anyone here from the public who wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda. Seeing no one, we will move on. Public service announcements, Stephanie. And construction updates.
And one construction update. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. The City of Monticello Utility Department provides an annual drinking water report that outlines the quality of our drinking water, what it contains, and how its quality compares to Environmental Protection Agency and State of Minnesota standards. The 2024 report is now available online on the city website, monicellmn.gov. The report includes testing results based on monitoring from January 1 through December 31, 2024, and past reports can also be viewed online. The farmers market continues Thursdays from 3:30 to 7:00 p.m. in the public library parking lot with a variety of vendors and live music. This Thursday is the first 55-plus market day of the season, held, which is held on the second Thursday of each month. Customers 55 years and older can receive $4 in tokens to buy fresh fruits and vegetables from vendors. Stop by the information booth for more information and for tokens. Join us this Friday, June 13, for Movies in the Park. We'll be showing Moana 2, starting shortly after 8:00 p.m. at Pioneer Park. Bring a lawn chair or a blanket and some snacks. Concessions will also be available for purchase. Following Friday, this Saturday, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. is Walk and Roll at West Bridge Park in River Street. The event kicks off at 9:00 a.m. with a ribbon cutting for the new West Bridge Park playground. Then enjoy more than 50 pathway partner booths, live DJ music, bounce houses, farmers market vendors, and concessions, including ice cream. And don't miss the live prize drawing at 11:00 a.m. We're giving away over 40 bikes. Discounted bike helmets will also be available for purchase. Visit the city website for full event details and how to enter the drawing. Please note that River Street will be closed from, or at Highway 25 and Walnut Street from 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on the event day. Next week, we continue with our events. Tuesday, June 17, from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. at Pioneer Park is the Bubble and Foam Party. This is a free, family-friendly event for all ages with a live DJ, food vendors, and a special visit from the Monticello Fire Department, featuring their ladder truck's flash pad. And Music on the Mississippi will be on Wednesday, June 18, at West Bridge Park. Bring a chair and your dancing shoes and enjoy some great live music. Food, beer, and beverages are available for purchase from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Live music by the Shane Martin Band starts at 6:30. And on Thursday, June 19, City Hall Public Works and the DMV will be closed in observance of Juneteenth. Highway Liquors and the Monticello Community Center will be open their standard hours. And for a construction update on the school boulevard improvement project, on behalf of Matt Leonard, city engineer, the contractor continues to work on the Cedar Street Roundabout. They have been installing storm sewer, pouring curb, and sidewalk. Private utilities are currently working to relocate their facilities for the new improvements. The contractor is planning to pave a portion of Cedar Street at the end of next week. Oops, sorry, at the, at the end of next week, depending on the weather. The next phase of the project will require one night of overnight work to complete storm sewer installation, and the next phase is expected to begin in two to four weeks. Once that date is confirmed, it will be posted on the city website. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, move on to council liaison updates. IEDC, Charlotte.
IEDC met last week on Tuesday, June 3. Our table topic, Jim and, Jim and Tyler presented the overview of the Greater MSP RFI Ready and how those steps are used in responding to and preparing a request for information packets for deed purposes. So, we talked about the shovel-ready sites and how we promote those. The Monticello Chamber and the Wright County Economic Development Partners activities were updated as well. And then we had an economic development update regarding business retention and expansion visits, in-progress projects, prospect updates, as well as a review of the Planning Commission meeting agenda. There was new B and, these business retention visits were also scheduled with the IEDC members. And then we had an update from Rachel regarding what we've been up to.
All right, thank you. Planning Commission, Kip.
Last week, we met and unanimously approved the parking ordinance amendments that are on the consent agenda this evening for the downtown area. We are also going to be hearing from Tamarack Development at an upcoming meeting about the Meadows at Pioneer Development proposal and any changes they have to that after going through Planning Commission. Not much else to report, there's a really great development director. Well, state legislature did not take action on some of the zoning incursions upon city autonomy. So, that is good news, but they will be taking it up again next year, so we need to remain vigilant. Good report from Planning Director as well, and thank you, staff.
I almost said sharpen our swords, but that would be inappropriate. Grab your shields.
Grab your shields, sure, thank you.
All right, EDA, Tracy.
Okay, the EDA, we met on Wednesday, May 28, and we had just one agenda item. We passed, approved a resolution 25-03 reaffirming approval of a facade improvement forgivable loan to Nordic Tap House, 106 Walnut Street, in the amount of $111,000. And we heard from our economic development manager.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The other Tracy, come up to the podium. Human Resource Update, Party of One.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. What?
Master of many, lots of people.
Yes, yes. So, I'm here to give the annual update for the Human Resources Department. When Jennifer told me it was my time to come up again, I couldn't believe it. Time just flies, it really does. Last year, I was here talking about our performance review system in NeoGAP. So, I have a couple, we've moved on past that, that's been doing great. And we have a couple of big projects going on this year that I'm excited to share with you, too. So, we'll get into it. As the mayor mentioned, I'm Tracy, I'm the HR Manager here at the City of Monticello. I'm a Department of One, but I do have some assistance from our City Hall admin and from our payroll clerk on a number of items. So, they help me out whenever they can. The services that I provide, I do the recruitment and selection and onboarding for all of our staff. I do the benefit plan design and administration, pay equity administration and compliance, training and development, safety and professional development, compliance with all of the federal and state laws, FLSA, FMLA, ADA, ESST that was added, all of those. I administer the Work Comp and the Unemployment Administration, soon-to-be Minnesota Paid Leave Administration, do the employee and labor relations, and then also Performance Management. The City of Monticello, currently, we have 256 total employees. That fluctuates slightly month to month, but has remained, I mean, it hasn't increased a whole lot over the last five years. Primarily, the increases that we've seen have been more with our part-time staff. You'll see that, like, with our part-time community center staff and our seasonal staff, liquor store as well, a lot of them just aren't available as much. So, we're having to hire more people. And that's, you know, a lot on the managers as well, but just, just more staff because they're not available. Job postings each year are, we post our positions on our city website, and we also post them internally for all of our staff. Typically, we post, you can see the statistics there. Last year, we posted 38 positions on our city website. The positions that we post are full-time positions, part-time positions. Occasionally, we have paid-on call firefighter positions. We're lucky in that regard where we don't have a whole lot of turnover on our fire department. We also post volunteer opportunities for our boards and commissions. So, that's something that's remained really consistent as long as I've been here, are postings. We collect applications through a number of different resources. Primarily, the bulk of our applications come from Indeed. We also get a significant amount from our city website. And then others, social media, ZipRecruiter I use occasionally. It really depends on the position itself. We do get some from the League of Minnesota Cities as well, but not as many as you would, you would think. Our applications have been trending up since, well, since I go back 10 years on my numbers. They've been trending up. So, more and more people are looking at the City of Monticello and wanting to work here. Some interesting things that I thought I would bring forward, something that you may not realize, or the people at home may not realize, that if you're interested in working for the City of Monticello, on our city website, if you go to employment opportunities in the upper left-hand corner, you can get notifications about any positions that you might be interested in. And then when we post a position online, you'll get an email notification that there's an opening. So, that's how we do, I think, get a lot of our applications. You can see here, right now, we have, I looked yester, last week, and we had 1,350 people in queue to get emails when positions open up at the city. And you can do some reporting, and the positions here are the ones that are most signed up for to get the notifications. Think they're probably what we'd expect. I wasn't super surprised, the childcare was a little interesting to me, but we have a lot of people that are interested in working at our childcare facility at the community center, so that's a good thing. Each year, the positions filled, last year, we filled 15 full-time positions. Now, those weren't all new positions created. A lot of them, they were either due to retirements, they were promotional opportunities, voluntary resignation, resignations, and then backfillings. So, there's a lot of different reasons for those positions. And then, part-time positions, last year, we filled 75 part-time positions. That's probably what I would expect that we would do. So, those things, when we do those recruitments, it's a lot of people involved. It's not just me, I post the position, but the managers do a lot of interviewing here. We all help out with the onboarding. Payroll clerk does a lot of data entries. So, when you look at those numbers, there's a lot of people that work here at the city that are a big part of bringing a new hire onboard.
So, out of that 15, how many of those positions were new? Newly created, I mean.
Newly created last year. Do you, we had one in streets, I believe, last year. And was that it, Sarah, do you remember from the budget? Which one? Oh, we did a little shifting with our admin staff. So, if you recall, we had an admin that supported the city clerk part-time and the community development partner, director, part-time, and we bumped up those hours to full-time. So, one and a half.
But that wasn't this year?
That was last year. Well, it was the budget. That went into play this year. Last year was streets.
Right, yeah.
I'd have to get back to you, exactly on the breakdown of the 15, but.
We hired Ann this year.
What?
We hired Ann this year.
We did, yeah.
For the new, that position.
Yeah.
Well, the, the point of my, my question, I'll get to it, I always do, the, so out of 15, we had one new, newly-created position last year.
I believe so, I'd have to look at that. Do you remember, Sarah?
Close enough.
I feel like we should know that. We had a lot, we, we hired, last year, I can tell you, we, we had left the parks foreman position vacant for a number of years. So, that, we promoted someone into, I believe we added an additional streets person last year. We did recruitment at the liquor store. We had quite a bit of turnover with our full-time staff last year at the liquor store. So, if two or three of those were liquor store. But yes, it's not like we're adding, you can see with our full-time staff, or was it? I mean, we didn't add anymore, it's all just kind of, yeah.
Yeah, it's just a big percentage of the total number of full-time employees we have. It's 20-some percent of our full-time employees.
The turnover, the turnover.
The turnover.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, 15, that's, that's a lot. So, we have a lot of people in new positions at the city. Not newly-created, but new positions.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so as Tracy noted, there was one new position that was created in 2024 within the Streets Department. There were also a couple of positions that had not been filled previously. Somebody had maybe been promoted out of a position, we didn't fill it right away. We had a couple of foreman positions that we then allowed people to move into once the departments felt that they were ready to fill those positions. But it was really just that one new position, and then the shifting around of the administrative position.
Yeah, I guess I was making an observation that one out of five or more are new.
So, the, the turnover, if we look at the turnover, in general, 10% of the turnover is considered healthy for employee turnover. You can see here, and then average, most industries have 15 to 20% turnover. With retail industry is, of course, you know, having higher turnover in general. So, you can see, for 2024, the full-time staff turnover was at 10%. That's voluntary turnover. That would be resignations and retirements. That's right where we'd expect it to be. And then, as well as the part-time DMV staff and the liquor store staff, those ones are, you know, right where we'd expect them to be, probably, for the part-time staff, if not lower than, you know, slightly on the lower end of average. And then, our part-time staff has creeped up a little bit again. You can see in 2023, it was down to 24%. I believe that probably was because we did a really pretty healthy pay adjustment for our part-time staff in 2023. So, now you can see it's creeping up again in 2024, but it's, it's still, you know, it's getting closer, probably, to the pre-pandemic levels with the turnover at the community center.
It probably cycles, too, because if you hire, hire a kid that's 10th or 11th, they work two, they might work two years, and then they're gone, right? Now, you have a whole new, new cycle of two-year work.
Yeah, and the, the community center is made up primarily of high school kids and college students, the majority of them. So, I mean, you're not going to get away from, from that higher turnover in that group. We have pretty low turnover at our liquor store, our DMV staff is very low, and then our full-time staff is, is pretty low as well. Couple of project updates I wanted to just mention today when we're looking towards the summer. This fall, there are a couple of bigger things that are going on in, in my world that I'm going to be working on along with the help from some other staff. The, the first one I wanted to just touch on was the classification and compensation study that the council approved as part of the budget last year. That study is underway. It's two parts, there's the classification part and the compensation part. The last time this study was done was 2019, so the consultant recommended it be done every five to seven years. So, we're right in kind of that area where it was time to look again. The classification piece ensures that the roles are appropriately structured within the hierarchy of the organization based on their responsibilities, and then points are assigned to those positions based on the, these job factors. There's five different job factors. And then, the purpose of that is, the points are applied based on those job factors, and then there's a hierarchy created that we use for pay equity reporting, and we have to report pay equity every three years. So, that's the first part. Since the last study in 2019, we had, I think, 17 position changes. And so, about a third of our positions kind of had some major changes, had grade changes. We created new positions, some significant changes. So, there were quite a few jobs that the consultant was going to be reviewing. So, that is, that's a big piece. And then the second piece is the compensation piece, and that's where the consultant will look at the salary ranges and compare those to similar positions in comparable cities or cities in the vicinity, both. And so, that's the second piece, and that we do to make sure that when our job postings go out there online on the website, that our ranges are within the ranges of others. So, we're not, you know, when we look at this study, our goal in the study is to be in line with others. We're not going to pay the most, we don't want to pay way less than other cities, but we want to just be right in, in the middle there so that we can attract a good number of applicants when we do have positions available. Little bit about the timeline and what you can expect with the compensation study. There were a couple of things that we've already completed. The first one is, we had a kickoff meeting between the consultant, Keystone Compensation Group, and the Personnel Committee. That was like a couple of months now ago, I think. So, we did that, and Personnel Committee members had the opportunity to ask questions, get an overview or preview of what the study was going to look like. So, we completed that, and then we've also completed a review of all of our job descriptions to make sure they were accurate and updated. And the managers played a big role in that, and I looked at all the job descriptions as well to make sure of consistency and making sure that those got sent off to the consultant. So, right now, in process, the consultant is looking at those job descriptions, reviewing them, awarding points, and they're almost complete with those. We just sent off a couple more that were kind of stragglers, so he's getting near completion of that. And then now, we're going to be moving into June and July. The consultant is going to be doing the compensation piece. So, as soon as the League of Minnesota Cities has the salary information available to the consultants and to us, they will be going in and doing the compensation piece. So, they're going to find benchmark positions that are positions that are very similar within different cities, and they will use those positions and look at the comparables and come up with these salary ranges that makes sense. And then later this summer, the consultant, Rachel and I will have the opportunity to meet with the consultant, ask some questions. He'll have some questions for us, we'll finalize everything before the consultant comes and meets with the Personnel Committee and then the full City Council. And that'll be in August, so there'll be plenty of time for budgeting purposes to finalize that. So, that, that's kind of an outline of the plan where we're at right now. The second update I wanted to provide tonight was an update on the Minnesota Paid Leave. We touched on that last year a little bit. That's something that is, is, is almost finalized, but it's still being tweaked slightly, developing. Just an overview of what the Minnesota Paid Family, or Minnesota Paid Leave is. Effective January 1, 2026, employees will now be able to take and receive pay for job protect, and job-protected leave for medical reasons, and then for family reasons, military reasons, bonding, safety reasons. And employees will be able to do this with job protection as long as they've worked with the city for 90 days. They can take up to 12 weeks of medical leave for their own serious health condition, and they can take an additional 12 weeks of family leave for bonding time, for caring for a sick parent, things like that. Combined, they're only able to take 20 weeks combined leave per benefit year. This is going to be run by a new Division of Deed, and it'll run a lot like Work Comp. So, what it means is, the city and the employees will pay premiums into deed on a quarterly basis, and in return, they will accept paid leave applications from employees and administer the program. To be eligible, anyone who earns at least 5.3% of the statewide annual wage in the past 12 months is going to be eligible for this program. And for 2024, it was basically if you made 3,700 in the previous 12 months, you're going to be eligible. Under this program, that also means that at the City of Monticello specifically, full-time employees, part-time employees, firefighters, elected officials, board and commission members, the wages that you earn for that will be combined with any other wages you have outside the city, and that will work towards, if you're making more than that 3,700 or 5.3% of the average annual wage, you'll be eligible for the program. There'll be an online application. We saw a preview of the online application just last week. It looks like something that's, it's going to be really helpful for internally, for, I think, the businesses and the cities that have the program. Applicants will log into an account, and one of the first questions that they're going to ask is, have you notified your employer? Who did you notify? What date did you notify? And unless they can fill that in, they won't be able to move forward. So, that's part of the things that are still coming up. We just saw that for the first time last week. Sarah and I were on a webinar on the paid leave. So, I think that, you know, it's changed, so it's kind of, it's new for everyone. So, we're going to do our best to get it all figured out. Bring a draft to council later this fall of a new policy. There will be some decision points that need to be made. We'll work with the Personnel Committee on that. Things like how do we blend our current PTO program with this new paid leave? How does it work with the ESST time? All of those things we need to figure out. So, we'll be working on that this fall and bringing a policy towards, toward the City Council this, this fall, probably with some other administrative updates.
So, have you done the math on, I'm sorry, have you done the math on, on what that's going to add? Because, I mean, based on the napkin, I'm going to guess that's $400,000 probably per year?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we've discussed different numbers. The way the law is written is that the city is required to contribute at least half of that premium, but could do more. I don't have that number off the top of my head, I know I've crunched it, but I don't have it at the moment.
It's 0.44% of our annual payroll, so.
Right, but the annual payroll is probably close to 10 million, isn't it?
6, 6.3, something like that. 6.3, so I would think maybe close, if we have to pay 0.44%, it would be roughly $30,000. Is that city's portion?
It'd be 300.
I must have forgot to carry the.
300?
I'd take 30,000, though, if Tracy says.
Yeah, I was going to say, that would be, is that 300, right?
No, that would be.
That's 300,000, right?
0.44% times the payroll, right? That would be half.
0.44% would be 6,000 dollars.
30,000, that's what I thought.
It's only 30?
Yeah, it's only 0.4. Oh, good.
Well, I guess I, all right, well.
I mean, I think six point, if you do six, six point, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I was doing 5%, not half.
I think it's going to be roughly $30,000.
All right.
For, for the city. And so then we will, the employees would have to make up that other percent, which if an employee makes $50,000 a year, they'd contribute $220 a year towards the program. And we'll do it via payroll deduction. There is some of the things we want to discuss with personnel and some different options there too, so.
For clarification, what is the benefit, what's the benefit offered by the premium?
So the benefit offered is salary reimbursement, but there's a maximum threshold, a maximum level that you can get reimbursed. And I believe it's 3,700 something is the maximum weekly benefit.
What's the maximum benefit?
I believe so.
By that premium?
Well, the premium, the premium is based on your wages. It's a sliding scale, and you can get up to 90% reimbursement, but there's a maximum level.
Are we liable for the overage?
No, we can't, and we can allow employees to top off with paid time off or E S S T or something like that, but we can't require them to. So we don't have to make them whole.
So the twelve, the twelve weeks is just the, you're guaranteed your job back?
Correct. If you've been here ninety days or more...
Not that you're guaranteed pay.
Oh, you get paid.
At your salary. Who's paying for it?
Yeah, both the employer and the employee pay for it.
Pay for the premium.
We have the premium, but deed, the state pays for it. The state will...
It's like, it's like unemployment.
The check will be cut by the state. The city is not cutting any checks for anything.
Up to 3700?
What?
Up to 3700?
The state pays that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't pay that. We pay premium, and then it's just like work comp, like we pay...
Or unemployment, like unemployment.
Yeah, yeah. So, am I not answering your question?
What could go wrong, except?
I am utterly lost.
You're what?
I'm familiar with the program, but I am also still utterly lost.
We're just learning it too. So we're going to have more definitive answers for you, but from what I can tell, it's 90% reimbursement up to a maximum amount. Everyone's eligible who makes at least 3,700 in the previous twelve months. I mean, that's just kind of an outline of what it is. It should cost the city about $30,000. We'll run those numbers again.
That's for the premium?
For the premium.
Just for the premium?
No, we don't pay anything else, but premium.
Yeah, we don't pay anything above the premium.
Okay.
But, but what's going to happen, and then I'll let it go, is that it's going to, it's going to nowhere near cover itself at 0.88. And so there's going to be, that percent is going to be 10 times that. That's what's going to happen, and then so it will cost us 300,000.
It'll be adjusted annually, but there is a cap of 1.26% right now on it, so that could be adjusted as well, but we don't know until it's up and running, you don't know. It's new. The one thing too is it will have to coordinate with FMLA leave. Right now, employees, the rules are a little different for that. So as a city, our role is to submit reports online of our wages, which we're already doing, and we need to deduct premiums, and we need to pay the premiums into deed quarterly. And we need to, as I would be the leave administrator, I would go onto the website. We'd view who's on leave, and based on that information, I would have to, the job protection would come through the city. It's, deed says we have to offer job protection, but, but there's requirements as far as notification to the employees and FMLA and how that all ties together. So I think once it's up and running, I mean, I feel like it's manageable, but it's new, so there'll be a lot of questions, and we have a lot of questions to start with, too. We're still figuring it out as well. But by this fall, we'll have it, we'll have it ready to go, and we'll have all the answers for you, hopefully. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Tracy.
All right. All righty. Well, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So someone would like to make a motion? Would be great.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion by Tracy.
Second.
Second by Kip. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Consent agenda is passed, and then we will move on to the added item of School Boulevard Roundabout, roundabouts. Rachel.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm just going to pull something up really quickly here. So I apologize for adding this for you. However, as the project continues to move along, there was an element here that I wanted to make sure that we had gotten some council consensus on the direction for, because it does have a cost impact. So as noted, there are two roundabouts that are being built on School Boulevard. We've had a lot of conversations about roundabouts in the community and how we want these to be designed. And what we are asking tonight is, given the fact that School Boulevard is a collector road and that these two roundabouts are immediately adjacent to the points at Cedar, what we had talked about in the plans and specifications was some colored concrete in the area that would be somewhat matching what is currently available at the Fennig Avenue Roundabout and School Boulevard. We had gotten some questions about potentially changing that color and did a little bit of research and digging into what that would entail. And so I'm just going to show you really quickly. So this is, as I noted, this is the Fennig Roundabout. And this is what is currently included in the project. So still something a little bit different, a little bit more colorful than just a standard concrete. However, we do have some other roundabouts in the community that have a slightly darker color, and this was where the question came from. We would not be doing any of the stamping in this, but we would be doing something a little bit more dramatic around that. There is an additional cost for that darker color. However, since we've received the question, I thought it was important to bring it forward. As noted, that lighter color that's currently included in the project specifications does not have any additional cost. However, if you wanted something a little bit more, a little bit fancier in this area, given the fact that this is a collector road, there would be an additional cost included. So we did not feel comfortable making that decision without talking to all of you first. That additional cost is fairly significant. It would be an additional about $18,000 to be able to put that concrete apron around both roundabouts and into those splitter islands with the darker color. So just wanted to make sure to bring that to your attention so that if you did decide that you want to go with what is currently in the project specifications, that there wasn't any surprise, once those roundabouts were complete, as to why they look like one of the roundabouts in the community and not any of the other ones. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Do you know the color of that particular one? Are they referring to that one as the black ice? Is that the color?
No, what we've come up with is something that's just a little bit more of a brown than the red. It's a little bit more pinkish on the, on the Fennig one, but definitely not quite as dark as what exists on the Fallon roundabouts, the three that were built with the bridge.
And if you use the darker colored concrete, here's what happens. Somewhere forgets to spray it, color it, seal it, do some other stuff later on, and it fades, and it looks stupid, and we'll hear about it left and right from that. That's just my opinion. And we spent the extra dollars, say, on the Seventh Street and 25 intersection where we grounded in those beautiful-looking crosswalks, and they have worn poorly. So I say we stick with what's in the specs. That's my own personal feeling.
I'm, I'm fine with the specs just because I haven't actually noticed. I drive through them all the time, and I guess I just noticed the landscaping, not the actual concrete.
Add more tulips or trees or bushes or something, you know?
So I guess I'm okay with the way it is. Plus, I think that the price they gave us is borderline ridiculous, although obviously my napkin failed me earlier on that other math. So I might be wrong on the square footage there, but I'm trying to think. Does anyone know how, how many linear feet there is around a roundabout there? I'm assuming it's eight by eighty, maybe? But I mean, that just seems like, it seems like they're charging us $10 a square foot for color, and that's, should be the price of the whole, including all the concrete and the labor. So I think it's a ridiculous price that they're quoting for it, so. Maybe they have extra contingencies in that. So, all right.
What, what is the argument in favor of this from staff that causes us to come here?
Sure, we've had several conversations about how to manage and maintain a consistent streetscape throughout the community. And generally, the consensus that we've come to is that when there are areas of the community that are internal or on lesser, like regular roads, arterial roads, that maybe those ones, we would have a little bit less of an intensive streetscape. But in any of the areas where there is a higher traffic volume, where there are collector roads, or when they are immediately adjacent to a larger project, the downtown area, the points at Cedar, et cetera. We also have had more comments regarding just in general, public input on some of these projects. So as I stated, I think generally fully comfortable with as it exists today, but given some of the feedback that we've gotten on some of the other roundabouts, just wanted to make sure that we weren't leaving something on the table where the council was looking for something a little bit more eye-catching in an area that is intended to have additional development, development in the coming years.
Hard no.
You know, folks race through those roundabouts so fast, they don't even know what color it is. It's okay.
I appreciate you allowing me to ask the question tonight to make sure that we're following with what your consensus is, as I stated. I think just, our staff is completely fine with the direction as given, but wanted to make sure that you'll be fully satisfied with the project once those roundabouts are complete, particularly since the conversation we had about some of that landscaping and making sure that those are a strong reflection of the community. So I appreciate you allowing me to add it tonight.
So can I ask you this, then? So as we go to put the trees, rocks, and that in the center of those, are those going to reflect the various biomes that we are planting in the points at Cedar, as a reminder?
Correct, yes, those will match that southern biome.
I think if that ties, that's reasonable instead of spending an extra eighteen grand on colored concrete today.
Thank you for bringing this, Rachel.
All right, anything else before we adjourn for the night? All right, thank you, everyone.